I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in special session on May 12, 2021, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 p.m. Board members present are Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent at this time are Ms. Keano, and I understand that she may be under one. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation today will be given by Ms. Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Fernandez. If you would please stand.
Would you please bow with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings this day. We thank you for our school district and all the wonderful things that we're able to do for our students, and we thank you for those teachers and administrators who make it possible. As we go into the business meeting for this district, we ask that you would lead, guide, direct us, help us to make the decisions that are right decisions for our personnel and for our students. We ask that you would lead, guide, and direct us, keep us ever in the center of thy will. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to place the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I place this flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
The board is going to adjourn to closed session. Ah, I hear my voice. Thank you. The board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071 to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We reconvene in open session in just a few minutes. The board is reconvening in open session, and it is 5:58 p.m. We have no public comments tonight according to policy BED Local related to items on the open session portion of the agenda, so let's move on to consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel. And I refer back to Ms. Keano.
My name is President. I move to approve addendums A through E.
Sir.
Motion by Ms. Keano, seconded by Mr. Kendrick, to approve addenda pages A through E. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. And I'm not going to skip over you this time. If you'll introduce those, I'd appreciate it.
Wonderful. Do we have Ms. Diana Gori with us this evening? Congratulations. You are a new, full-time LSSP.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You have been our intern, so congratulations to you. Do you have anyone with you today that you would like to introduce?
I'm coming straight back from school, still somewhere, some here. Very excited.
You've got plenty of family.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. We are a big family, so congratulations to you. We would like to welcome back Mr. Joseph Hicks. Congratulations. You also were an intern with us, and you are our new licensed specialist in school psychology. Do you have any family with you tonight?
My manager, my son, my daughter.
Congratulations to you. Beautiful family, by the way. And this next individual is not with us this evening, but when you see her around, we would like to welcome to Pasadena ISD Ms. Lavanna Martin as a licensed specialist in school psychology as well. She is new to Pasadena ISD. And we would like to congratulate as the new assistant principal at Burnett Elementary, Ms. Melissa Hickman. Congratulations, you have family tonight.
I do. My husband, Neil, my daughter, Juliana, and my son, Jake.
And your Burnett family as well.
Yes, you do. Always here supporting you. Congratulations, we're very excited for you. And we would like to welcome to Pasadena ISD Ms. Seela Tabian-Poor. Did I say that correctly?
You did.
Okay, great. I've been practicing. Congratulations, you are a new specialist in special education. Do you have any family with you tonight?
I do not, but I do have a special family here.
Which is a great family.
Yes.
Great, great people over there. So congratulations to you. We're very excited for you. Welcome to Pasadena ISD, we know you'll love it here.
And at this time, if you were here to recognize one of your loved ones or a friend that has just been named, and you'd like to leave the meeting, you're welcome to do so, or we welcome you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll be doing some budget workshop and a few other things, so you might find that a little boring at this time. So it's up to you.
Hey, Aggie. What's that say on your shirt?
No, which one? No. I couldn't see it.
She gave my message.
Okay, let's move on to consideration and possible approval of the canvassing of returns for the Pasadena ISD trustee election conducted on May 1, 2021. And I'm going to refer to Deanne. All right. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. Well, board members, I'm going to read the results as we have them for the canvassing for Pasadena ISD trustee position one. Noble J. Alex Jr. received 3,186 votes for a total of 44.26 percent. Paola Gonzalez Fusiliar received 4,013 votes for a total of 55.74 percent, for a total votes cast, 7,199. In Pasadena ISD trustee position two, Mayor Salquihano received 3,420 votes for 48.41 percent of the vote. Crystal Davila received 3645 for 51.59 percent, for a total of 7,065 votes cast. In Pasadena ISD trustee position three, Sunil Nepal received 443 votes, right at 6.18 percent. Yen Rabe received 1,650 votes for 23.01 percent. And Nelda Sullivan received 5,077 votes for 70.81 percent, for a total of 7,170 votes cast. And then in Pasadena ISD trustee position four, Al Bloodso received 2,704 votes for 38.92 percent. Arif Bouyan received 492 votes for 7.08 percent. And Casey Fiedlen received 3,751 votes for 53.99 percent, with 6,947 votes cast.
Do I hear a motion to approve the canvassing of the returns?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Do you know, Dr. Powell, if there were any, does it show if, not transitional?
Provisional.
Yeah.
Yes, the sheet that you should have in front of you shows each, for each trustee position, how many early vote provisionals were passed, as well as election day provisionals. So you can see in position one, there was a total of 13 early vote provisionals and 13 election day. Same for trustee position two. There were actually, in trustee position three, 15 early vote provisionals, and election day, 14. So there was a difference there. As well as in position four, that one also had 15 for early vote provisional and 13 for election day. So it has it by candidate and by days.
It's my understanding, I was forced into doing a provisional ballot. They said that I had already cast a ballot. I went back three times and finally was able to vote provisionally, and I was told that it was going to count. Now I'm told that I will get a letter as to whether or not my vote counted or not. So I am awaiting that letter, and I'm not a happy camper. I understand. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right? So any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next, we have budget workshop. Dr. Powell?
So, board members, it's very early in the process, and actually, it's not early, but with a legislative session going on right now, and still 18 days at least until they finish, there's a lot of unknowns. But we wanted to bring forward to you this budget draft that you have in front of you. As you know, we start budget way back in January. We started with the initial process for 2122 school year, and our first challenge was local tax revenue. Our MNO tax rate will be dropped again from 1.073 to 1.0598. So that is a concern for lost revenue. And then in January, we had projected a slight increase in our tax base, so our estimated tax base grew by 1.4 percent for next year. So again, last year, even though we dropped the collection rate to 95 percent due to COVID, we actually very happily saw 98 percent collection. So we were happy about that. So for 2122, we estimated revenue on a collection rate of 98 percent, like we saw this year. So you can look at the different columns of estimated revenue and, of course, changes that are outlined there. This brings an additional 9.4 million in revenue for next year. So you see that listed at the top line of your budget summary, of course, of the draft one. So as you can see, we are still monitoring, there's so many unknowns, so many various factors that are being decided right now in the legislative session. Budget planning and adoption is always our best estimate of revenue and expenses. I know some people don't understand that, but it's a best estimate of revenues and expenses, and I'm not saying board members, but we want our community to understand. So based on the facts that we know at this time, that's what we're presenting to you here. Those are always possible to change based on things like tax collection rates, unspent payroll, as you all know, unspent or overspent campus or department budgets, emergency needs, things like COVID. We all remember how much money we had to spend, unanticipated costs, but as well, COVID had our campuses and our departments not spending as much of their budget last year. An example would be our electric bill. When we weren't in school, we weren't in our buildings, of course, there was a savings there that we didn't expect as well. Another thing that we're always monitoring is ADA and attendance, and how that's going to impact our bottom line. So things we know for sure, COVID had a negative impact for our child nutrition program, regardless of the outstanding job they did. They did experience a $6 million loss last year. So their fund balance dropped to 1 million. So we need to lower the amount of indirect costs that they contribute, so you see that there on the draft budget. If we see the program adding back to fund balance, then we'll, of course, adjust the IDC charge for that program. We're losing state revenue. You can see the 25 million that's listed there as a change. That's, again, because of our tax base increasing, as well as the decline in student population. We know those pre-K students did not come to school as we expected, and moms and dads held them back due to the COVID concerns, so we're hoping they will take part in our pre-K program. We're doing enrollment right now, daily, so we're hoping those numbers will increase. But the business office stays up to date. There's a template that Omar Garcia provides for all states' school districts. The CFOs work with that. Right now, they're getting updates pretty much weekly, if not daily sometimes. I think they're on template number 11, or has that changed to 12 already? Okay, we're on 11. Federal revenue, of course, is something we also monitor. Sharers, we will be going up by a million, so that's noted on there as well. And then we've projected, of course, a 3 percent raise that we're going to talk about later tonight. So that's listed on the second page as far as the cost related to that. I feel like at this time, even though you're looking at a deficit budget because of that lost state revenue, I think we can sustain that moving forward for years to come, and it's a great way for the board to thank our staff that have worked so hard and stepped up in such a big way during this most challenging year. You might ask me, why are you bringing it now and not wait till later? Tony Lopez comes to me daily about recruitment. Principals, of course, are helping to retain their staff and keep them in Pasadena ISD, so it's a great way to address recruitment and retention. So in late April, the district was notified about the ESER III monies. We've had some conversations about that. We're being told right now that we'll receive 147 million in funds. It's part of an application process. There are strict parameters in which we have to spend that money, but part of the ESER is to close the gap for education that was caused by COVID. So some of the items that we'll present later will include things like summer school, extended day, class size reduction. So you're going to see some things we took out of the budget in order to move those costs to the ESER funds that we'll be utilizing. So again, to meet the needs of our students, we felt it was imperative to leave class sizes smaller for next year to maintain the ratios, so we're moving 10 million in salaries to the ESER grant once it's approved. We're hoping our enrollment will go up as well. Campus allocations are always based on the October snapshot, so we give campuses based on a formula how much money they get per student. Departments, as you know, we started zero-based budgeting sometime back, and we did that again this year. That process helps us make sure that we don't just keep giving the same amount year after year. They have to justify for each department, and that can be good and it can be bad, because sometimes they ask for a whole lot more, huh? So, of course, I don't know if you have questions, but when we started and we took all the things that departments and campuses wanted and all the staff, there was about a $68 million deficit. So we didn't bring that to you tonight, because I wanted your tickers, your hearts not to palpitate like mine did when I saw that. So we scrubbed a lot of the one-time cost out. We also looked at what we could move to ESER funds, like HVAC needs in the district for ventilation, some technology needs. We know we've addressed student technology, but we need to address teacher technology. So just to name a few, those are some things we took out and moved over to possible ESER funding. But as we move through the next couple of months, we will expect to see changes both to revenue and expenses because of that legislative outcome. But as we learn about ESER, House Bill 3 cleanup, which is a big part of what they're discussing right now, and any other new legislation, we'll keep the board up to date throughout the process. So I've got my team here. Karen even brought her budget cart down. So any questions that you have, we'll be happy to answer.
I have a comment. Deanne, I just want to thank you and the staff, because obviously, as leader of this district, you're frontline, and you have a lot of people that respect you, and you've been very active in those people that trust and respect you, Commissioner of Education to name one. But all over this county, all over this state, I think people have a great deal of respect for you and your staff, and I think that, I think we're doing great things in Pasadena. You've led us through some tough times since you took over as superintendent. We've gone through some really tough stuff, and you've held your head high, and you've, you have been a true leader, and I think you deserve a tremendous amount of thanks and credit.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and like you said, it takes the team. I should be clapping for everyone out there, but we have had some weird things happen since I took over. I keep hoping y'all don't assimilate that to me or make sure it's about me. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Indirect cost reimbursement on the food service situation? We served, what, 3.5 million meals last year?
You want to come up?
By the federal money.
Okay. I didn't bring my package. Well, a lot of it was those breakfast and lunch kiddos that weren't taking advantage of all the services we offered. So you want to talk about the losses and what we're still doing?
We had the largest loss in child nutritionist because we only get credit and we're paid from federal government if they picked up a meal. And so it's only meals served. And so normally, we serve over a million, I mean, millions, and we just didn't make that threshold, so we had a $6 million loss. And we knew we were going to have it. I mean, we saw it right away, and we started watching it and monitoring it. Because what happens in child nutrition, if they really completely run out of money, out of their fund balance, then the general fund has to contribute to make them whole, because they can't have that deficit. And that's one of the reasons we've lowered the indirect costs, because their indirect cost is really there to pay for their trash bill, their electric bill, because we pay for all that at the district level, at our local, and then we give them a percent back, and that percent's like 12 percent off of their expenses after we remove food costs and after we remove their capital outlay costs. So it's a small percent that they get that we can charge them, but we can't charge them if they don't have enough money. So we're watching it, but they had the loss because they didn't serve enough meals.
Didn't serve enough.
We're doing good things for kids.
We were number one in the greater scenario. Yeah.
Is 148 million for 147 million you got to be spending this calendar through the year?
No, sir. It will be, the deadline will apply for the funds in July, and once we get the NOGA, we can start spending the money, but it's actually a little over two years.
Right. It ends in 2024, pieces of it, and some in 2023. It kind of depends on which side of it that you have to look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
When will the new Frontline computer system be implemented and completed?
Well, we have been, well, I shouldn't say we. I will take that mouse out of my pocket. Tony and Carla and several others on their teams have been working with them, so y'all want to talk about training principals? It's going to be part of our summer principal academy, so we'll be training not only principals but staff. But do y'all want to talk about the full implementation and timeline? She's going to bring her partner up there.
Because we're kind of split. I handle the finance side, and Tony does recruit and hire and the HR side, so I'll let her go first, because her side goes first.
So that's what we will train principals on this summer, on June 8, is recruit and hire, and we'll have that up and ready to go this summer, as well as our substitute system. And so those will be fully functioning, and we're still working on the finance side. But of course, the HR side has to get done first, so it can flow to the finance side.
So it'll be fully implemented by the time school starts for the new year.
The HR side will be. I'm going to let Carla talk about her deadline for hers. It's a little bit different.
So we're going to train on the finance piece on all bookkeepers and all secretaries and campus staff in August when they return. We felt it wasn't productive for us to do it over the summer, and so we felt it would be best when they come back after a break, because we all know sometimes we'll unplug and unwind and forget what we learned. So we're going to wait until August to train on that. Our goal is to be live September 1, because we need to close out Lawson, and then we'll be fully functioning September 1 in Frontline. However, we will have two systems up on the finance side, because we still have to close out the current year that we're in that's in Lawson. So we will have two sides up on our side. But as far as the campuses, we're looking at September 1. Purchasing is ready to go. Our budget side's ready to go. Today, we did some on journal entries and the GL side, so we're working on the payroll side to tweak that, because that's probably our most important. We don't want to mess up anyone's salary, because we'll get a lot of calls, and so we need to make sure that's perfect before we roll that piece of it out.
And HR is going to run two parallel systems, too. So right now, we are inputting into two systems, so we're doing double entry as well until we can get fully up and functioning.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? So are you ready, Dr. Powell, for us to do the 3 percent of midpoint?
Yes, that's the next item. So if you want to move on, I'll bring back, we'll have many more budget workshops, so this is the first of many.
Right. Okay, so next is consideration and possible approval of 3 percent of midpoint salary increases for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. I do have a little question. How does this compare to other surrounding districts?
So we were texting, calling, harassing other districts. They're waiting for us. I mean, you know, they were just on us. We want to do one, two, maybe three, but what are y'all going to do? Tell us what y'all are going to do. So we're right out of the gate, and I think that's going to help us with recruitment and retention.
Good.
With the ESER funds, we can all come back and have discussions about bonuses or, you know, stipends for retention. But I think, you know, again, Umble said three, is that right? Some have said one and two, but we've had conversations. Some didn't want to talk at all, right? Karen, you ask in your meetings, HR, they send surveys out, but this is going to help with recruitment and retention. It's going to put our starting salary at 57.
Is it really a help, or is it a fishing expedition? So is it like, okay, you go first so that I can beat you?
You know, last year, we went later, and then there was a neighboring district, I won't name them, but they went back and had another meeting, because they didn't want our starting salary to be higher than theirs. So they went back and had another total budget meeting to up their salary just a little bit over ours.
Well, maybe we might have to do that, too. We might have to play some games.
You know how it is.
I'll keep y'all updated about other school districts as they start talking. And some of them wouldn't respond on the text, but they called me and said, here's the deal, Deanne, we're waiting. What are you doing? We want to know.
57619.
Okay, so starting salary will be 57619.
That's great.
Not everybody plays fair.
That's awesome. I can remember when it was 20-something thousand, so I mean...
It was 1905, the year I started. I'm sure Karen's got that beat. 17.
Okay, let's move on. Consideration and possible approval of a $2 per hour salary increase for the 2020-2021 summer school.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion?
So, board members, this has, like I said, been the hardest year I've ever seen, so we're just trying to get people to be motivated to help us out with closing those gaps this summer. We'd like to do more, but we're really going to start with $2 per hour for salary increase and then review everything for the following year. But we definitely can charge this back to ESER as long as we write it into our application.
Very good. Very good. Dr. Powell? Yes, ma'am.
We have probably more students than anticipated, or that we've had in years past because of the COVID.
We are holding kids accountable, so they are going to need to do credit recovery. They're going to need to come in and make sure they're getting the instruction that they need or the intervention opportunities that we're providing if they want to see that next grade level. So we are holding kids accountable.
Okay. Good.
Are we allowing outside districts to come in and use our summer school?
They can pay tuition for summer programming if there is space.
Okay. Do we vote on this?
And one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be scholarships offered for those that have financial?
The counselors do work with the students and their families to offer scholarships if there's a financial need.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Next is consideration possible approval of expenditure for 3,000 Chromebooks, warranties and Google licenses from Summer Industries and Dell Technologies in the total amount Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Was it? Yeah, who seconded that motion? You did, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
So Board members, as you can imagine, with the federal funds coming our way, there's going to be another competition to get to these computers. So this was a, I guess, bid that we got that was very competitive as well as it was the type of computers that we were needing. So we can also look at charging this back to SRR is my understanding. So we wanted to make sure we went forward with this.
So how many, 3,000 Chromebooks?
This would add 3,000 Chromebooks to our inventory.
That's awesome. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Finally, consideration possible approval for Pasadena Memorial High School varsity volleyball team to travel to Orlando, Florida to attend and compete in the KSA volleyball tournament from September 1st through 5th, 2021. Motion by Mr. Bailey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
I understand that this is a company, KSA, that it's not necessarily a school event. So my question is, how many schools are going to be there to participate in this tournament at this time?
I'm assuming there'll be hundreds, but we'll let the coach come up and answer that.
Yes, thank you. So in typical years, there are over 60 teams from all over the United States that go to this tournament and compete. This year, I just spoke with the tournament director and there are 26 out-of-state teams plus 10 Florida teams that are currently registered. So the competition is, they're still, it's not quite up to what it normally is due to circumstances, but I still feel that it's going to be a great experience for these kids and they're going to see volleyball like they've never seen before. So, and referring to this not being ran by a school and it is a company, they are accredited by NFHS, which is what governs our volleyball and our play, so.
Are we a member of that National Federation of?
High school sports.
We abide by the rules or we members? Same thing? Good.
And one other question. Is there this type of competition offered within the state?
Not in Texas. I have not found any tournaments where out-of-state teams come. There are a few that are up north that I've been to, but only like Louisiana, teams from Louisiana have attended and some California. Most of these teams are from the East Coast that attend this tournament. Thank you. You're welcome.
Who's the, and I apologize, I've looked at this thing, but what does KS, something, KSA stand for? What's the acronym for? I've read this and I haven't found the acronym for KSA.
It doesn't stand for, I don't know what the actual KSA stands for. They do a multitude of different sporting events, not just volleyball. They do basketball tournaments.
Football.
Football tournaments, you name it.
Yeah. Who is their liability carrier? Who's, 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 is your insurance the one responsible for this? The school district? They're school kids, so who's responsible for that?
Well, just like any trip that we take, we have, you want to answer that? I'm letting Carla.
KSA stands for Kaylee Scholarship Association.
Kaylee Scholarship Association?
Yes. And it's advanced national tournaments and it's lacrosse.
Yeah, they got everything. Who's Kaylee?
I'm sorry?
Who's Kaylee? Okay, go ahead. Who's the insurance carrier?
Our insurance through Gallagher. We have provided for student travel insurance, so we have that already current and our expiration will be bringing that on the next week for renewal because that starts over on June 1st.
Okay, so our kids would be covered under our carrier?
Under our current insurance, yes, sir.
And is this open to club volleyball, private parochial?
Not club volleyball, just school, but charter schools do attend. There are a few charter schools that are registered to play as well, but no club teams. Yes, ma'am.
And you have to pay how much money upfront?
Well, originally, we were set to start payment in January, but because of COVID and, you know, all the things that have come up, we can make payment as we go. We have all the funds that we need necessarily secured already. So as soon as, if y'all approve this, we're able to start payment immediately. But the final payment isn't due, I believe, until July 1st. Yes, two months before we go.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
If something should happen and this clinic does not come through and you've paid all this money, what's the assurance that you're going to get it back? And my reason for this, we have another school in the district and they planned a trip to Spain and the trip was canceled and the people can't get their money back.
Yes, ma'am. There is travel insurance.
Everybody's looking around. That was not a school sponsored.
It took place at school. It was not school sponsored.
Yes, ma'am. There is travel insurance that we will purchase. And in the event that the tournament gets canceled for some odd reason, we can roll our registration over to the next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess my question is, you roll it over to the next year and those same kids are not involved?
Not necessarily.
That bothers me a little bit. Couple of other questions. Will these students be vaccinated prior to going?
If it's required.
Only if the group?
The tournament doesn't require it, but if it's something that is required, then that's something that we will have to look at.
I know that a lot of times that is the way that it's spread. And when you've got that many girls together, you know, that's always a possibility. So that concerns me. Second is, I think Rupert, maybe you could answer this. Are we opening up Pandora's Box?
No, because one of the requirements of the...
Can you go to the mic?
No, because one of the requirements is raising the funds and getting prepared. So it's not going to really be open to all teams taking advantage of this opportunity. We think it's a great opportunity and experience for our kids, our athletes, as well as our, you know, other organizations. So we're thankful for the opportunity, but it is not going to apply to everybody.
Okay. And Board members, remember this was on an early item, on an earlier agenda, and I pulled that and fine arts and athletics met together with our ASCDs and others just to make sure we have the same guidelines and timelines and parameters that we have for other trips.
Okay, okay.
I only have one question. I don't know anything about volleyball. You know, the only thing I know is about cheer. So like in cheer, we have varsity or NCA or that kind of organization. I didn't know what KSA stood for or whatever. So in volleyball, I don't know what organizations there are, so.
My only question is like, why did you choose KSA versus whatever volleyball organizations there are as far as tournaments?
Well, there aren't, there aren't too many. Let me backtrack just a little bit. When I took over the volleyball program at Memorial, it was always my intention to do something different and something great for these kids because some of them are never going to be able to experience anything outside of their high school experience in the first place. So we started out small, going to... We started out small, going to tournaments in Texas when I had a team that I felt like I could take and compete because not all teams are prepared. And this particular tournament, this isn't, this year wasn't the first year that I really wanted to take my kids. My 2018 season, when I went two rounds deep in the playoffs, it was my intention to take them then, but because district realigned and we started season before Labor Day, it was impossible. I tried to get my buy that first week, or even out of town for that matter. And when this opportunity presented itself again, when district realigned, I had nine returners coming back, six of which are seniors. I thought, this is it, like this is finally going to happen. And then COVID and I was like, ugh. So they don't have, there's not like, I know you have NCA for cheer and stuff like that. Volleyball doesn't really have that. They don't have those kind of organizations. And whatever this organization is, somebody must have started and this is what they've, this is how they make their living, I guess. I've looked at tournaments in Nevada and different places like that, but timelines just didn't line up. And this was like the perfect time and opportunity with the right kids that deserve this opportunity to go. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, are you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have no further business to come before this Board, so I declare this meeting adjourned.